Let's get started.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for Ed. He's right there. I don't know. He's watching cameras or something. But yeah, you can get started. It is technically time to start.
Okay, well, I'm here to talk about the Planning and Neighborhood Resource Department. We don't have many numbers to historically look at since this is a little bit different structure this year. So we've tried to account for expenses that we know are going to be needed for our office as well as specifically for grants that we have either we already have grants for that we have matches or that we anticipate will receive in the coming year. So I can I do have a few adjustments that I'd like to request, but maybe before I do that, I don't know if there are questions that you have of me or if there's something with Lisa that you had based upon our budget here that you were given.
So this is going to be a little bit harder to decipher because it's been split off of code enforcement. So we tried to separate each expenditure category appropriately.
Yeah, so I'll just run down the numbers. How's that? So office supplies 3750, operating supplies 75, consumables 7500, professional services, that's accounting for our open-ended Michael Baker International contract that we have that goes until June of next year. And we're requesting additional funding to retain Michael Baker as for technical assistance. So that's what that number is. It's the original contract plus some additional contractual funding towards that.
Just with everything sorted around, was that in this line item last year?
Yes. No, it was a two-year, $60,000 each year, $60,000 contract. It was accounted for last year in planning and code.
And you want him for more than June?
Yes, I have, we requested to have an extension of that for additional technical services. Some of the things that we're working on right now, we just, we don't have the capacity to do some of it. Or I know Michael Baker is taking on at this moment the zoning ordinance, Article 7, the Historic Preservation Program, and redoing that, amending that, and that's very time consuming. And some of the expertise lies in the consulting world a little bit better. So that may extend beyond that contract of June 2025. Education and training, we are requesting 10,000. I think this was just a bit of a split from code. Last year, we requested 20,000, 10 for code and 10 for planning. The intent was to have both departments, I mean, both sides, you know, ramping up in training. We have some continuing education in that and then just trying to stay current for our GIS Administrator, for Historic Preservation Planner, AICP, and so forth, so on and so forth. Communication is 3720, postage 511. Advertising, that is not supposed to be, I did want to make an amendment, is 4041. Quinn should be removed from that line item also. We know that Quinn expense is for zoning hearing board. The Quinn law firm, that's the attorney that's retained for the zoning hearing board, and so that's under code now, not under planning.
The money isn't in that.
The money is not. The money is not in the line item, just the name. Yeah, it's fine. And then advertising, the public notice also should probably be changed, the tax, because that's really code enforcement for advertising. However, was there a, what would be the marketing, that would be under advertising? We still will use that advertising budget for engagement purposes, for historic preservation. We still need money to be able to print and to advertise, maybe purchase from a third party certain things. So I'd like to keep the 3,000 in there for the department. Repair and maintenance of our office equipment, 1,000. Other services and charges, currently that's at 107.5. That includes the Historic Resource Survey, CLG 62.5, Design Guidelines we have in there for, these are all grants either that we have existing or grant matches. There is one that's missing, and that's the Safe Streets of 40,000. So there, I spoke with Lisa about this before we came in, and that needs to be accounted for in that line item. That's the Safe Streets and Roads for All match that we had on the $200,000 grant received from DOT.
I'm sorry, what line item are you on right now? 4059? Okay, we have a different number than what you said. You said 175,000.
187.5. You said 175.
Oh, sorry. Just reading it backwards. 187.5. Okay.
Would it need to go higher?
Yeah, to 227.5. That would be including the 40,000 for the Safe Streets. And all of that is either grants that we have existing that the budget is retained, I guess, this year, or it's the hopes that will go out for another Keystone, which requires a match, another CLG. These are Historic Preservation Grants that require a match. And then we have our Parks and Rec Plan in there. That's a match of 50,000 on the DCNR grant that we received.
So we have all these adjustments, like we have all these to deal with the end.
And Timmins should also be removed from 4059. Lisa, Timmins is now paid out of IT. So that's just another typo that needs to be taken out of there. Machine and machinery and equipment, we don't have anything. I've turned the page to 26, to the salaries now, unless there are questions on expenses.
So your copier and everything is good? Because $1,000 for repair and maintenance service really isn't a lot when you think about it.
I still don't really know what is going on with our copier and with our, we share a copier between the departments now. We also share a plotter, which is a very expensive thing to repair. I'm not sure what's going on there, so I didn't want to inflate or deflate the number because I'm not sure.
Transitions.
So so salaries, we have the software administrator, data analyst that was hired about, I guess it's almost, it's three months now because we did have a 90-day evaluation. I did one with our administrator there. So they're at 54, 325. Historic Preservation Planner, she is at 55,000. And I would like to come back to that position to request additional funding for her, as well as the GIS Administrator, who's at 56, 375. These two positions are most senior positions in terms of staffing. The Historic Preservation Planner, Heather Olson, she has two degrees. And she's been in the field for over 20 years. And our GIS Administrator has a very unique position, and I call it a commodity. We would have a lot of difficulty finding somebody to replace our GIS Administrator. It's just, we don't have a program here locally that, you know, we could pull from to find talent. And we just, we just don't have that specialty regionally right now. So I also, with specifically the GIS Administrator, we did a comparison to look at some of the other salaries that are more regionally or closer to Erie. And, you know, when you're looking at, even in Erie, the Water Authority, they have two GIS, they have a GIS Coordinator and a GIS Analyst. The GIS Analyst is at almost 59,000. The GIS Coordinator is 64,000. And then if you look at even the state, at the state level, they're starting at 66,000. Harrisburg, 66,000. Pittsburgh is a bit of a different standard of living, but it's, they're at 81,000. So this comparison showed that basically not one of the, not one of the positions was below 60, 66, 64,000. And then in terms of the Historic Preservation Planner, we had been paying the previous person in that position a higher rate than what we hired. And also, when doing a comparison, just of some other areas, Detroit, other places, we're looking at anywhere between 57 and 80,000 that these positions are starting at. So, yeah. Well, for, yes, the GIS Administrator, I had requested to move up to 60,000. I'm sorry, the Historic Preservation Planner, I had requested to move up to 60,000. And she went from 52 to 55. And then the GIS Administrator also, I did not request an increase at the time of my budget meeting with the administration, but I am requesting also to increase hers to 60,000.
There were savings with the Assistant Planner this year?
Yes. Yes, because we, the Assistant Planner position went from a position of Assistant Director back to a Planner, Assistant Planner, yeah. And that Assistant Director position, I think, was at 67,000.
Yeah, that lasted like a month, though. That's very brief.
Right. But I mean, that's where we ended up with that position. And so we adjusted and moved that to Assistant Planner position. And that particular person was hired at 51,000, and that's reflected of the raise now that is making 52, 275.
How long has the GIS in this year been with us?
Over a year. And she's really stepped in in terms of taking on, well, she stepped in once our Assistant Director left, she stepped in in that role. She's managing all of the ESRI applications, not only, not only with the Planning Department, but this is a citywide position. So she is working a lot with Public Works, with engineering, with police when she can. And so it is more than just making maps. It's administering an entire program. And then housing that data. And also a lot of project management with the ESRI software. Yeah. And then the Historic Preservation Planner, like I said, we, the previous Planner was making, we brought that person in, making more money. And she has, she has been doing a great job. It has been a large undertaking, and with a city of our size, typically you have at least three Historic Preservation people in that small department. She's one person running the entire show. So just trying to fight for my people.
I appreciate that. You understand that increases in the budget take a super majority from what the administration proposed, right?
Yes. Okay. That's all I have.
All right, the police are next.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Good night.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chief, let me start off by saying I appreciate almost all your lines are lower this year. I was looking through them, and I mean, the equipment for body cams hits us this year, but it looks like you found that other places.
We did. I like that. We have an active application right now that if we get it, it's going to save us two and a half years' worth of the cost. So
38.
Thank you, Renee, for all that, for all that hard work and
39.
Putting those grants together.
Yeah, that's fine. It's going to be up on the screen as well. It's easier to look up those.
Next year, we're hoping not to bring a PowerPoint. Getting old, hopefully we'll have our canine unit. So we'll bring our therapy dogs. If you're ready, we can
You can start whenever you're ready. The floor's yours.
You know, just some of the reminders, breaking news of what we had. I just did put out the review about all the VIP candidates that came. It was, it's a blessing and a curse that Erie's large enough to be noticed, but it also is very time consuming and takes a lot of resources when they do come. I can only imagine a city that's never had a presidential visit going through them for the first time, at least every year, every cycle. You know, we generally have a few coming through. This past season was a little bit more than normal. We survived. Some other local things this year, we announced our FBI Drug Weapons Suite with 24 indictments. You remember the year before, we did 58. A lot of those people are still locked up. Otherwise, we probably have a higher number again. We don't want to forget our early April solar eclipse, Path of Totality. We did a lot of planning for that, expecting the worst. The weather kind of helped keep the crowd down that day, but then in the afternoon, it cleared just in time. Celebrate Erie. We have an officer involved shooting, suspect who was struck. Officers provided some life-saving first aid, got him to the hospital right away. Was a great job by all the officers there. Shot Spotter, I had hoped to have our yearly report. We should have had that back in the summer. I have some of the raw data. Just have, with all our visitors and the budget session coming up, we really haven't gotten time to put together a Shot Spotter presentation. I hope to have that to you guys before the end of the year. You know, we had the homicide case, and I sent you that in the mail recently, the article about that. But that was a very, you know, that touched the community, touched the department and a lot of officers. It was a great job, and the gentleman got 60 years for that. Also, our cold case, we'll talk about our cold cases, but we did get the conviction for the 1988 murder too. So some great stuff going on. Erie Police Department, we respond to calls for service. You know, that's what we do every year, is our clerks in the 911 center take calls for us to respond to. And we've consistently been going up. 2020 was an abnormal year because of COVID. They were down significantly. Usually, they're in the 50s. But even being in the 50s, you can see the last few years, we're up to, last year, we ended at 59,000, just under the 60 mark. And with over five weeks to go, we're projecting we'll be around 62,000 calls for service this year. On our next screen, we're looking at the data comparison. These numbers are taken October over the past several years. And you can see all of them in green indicate that there were decreases in all major categories: shots fired, people shot, homicides, aggravated assault robbery. We just did the press release on that press conference and showed that all those numbers are significantly down. On the next page, it's just some more, these are more property crimes. You'll see a little bit of yellow, which indicates an increase. Obviously, theft has the largest, 166 additional thefts. Forgerys are only up by two, and the arson's are only up by 12. Last one there in yellow is DUI. And actually, that's a good mark, that, not that there's more DUIs, that enforcement of DUIs is up. Because officers have less shootings to respond to, they have time to work on other things, such as people driving under the influence. So really, I say that's a good number, that it's going up. And last, we, the domestics, we're showing a decline. Even though it's 24 less calls, it's a good mark for domestics to be going down. On homicides, to date, we are at four homicides. The first case was an unfortunate young child that got out of the house there. The second one, a domestic, you could call shooting. I think the individual thought it was the new boyfriend. It was actually a cousin, but that was a homicide on Fourth Street. The third one is a domestic. It was a stabbing. And the last one was a beating that occurred up on East 26th Street. And the last one was a beating that occurred up on East Twenty-Sixth Street. At the moment, we've cleared all four of those cases. On the next page, you'll see that the national average for homicide clearance is fifty-two percent. In the last seven years, we're at eighty-eight point seven, with a hundred percent the last three years alone. Twenty-four out of twenty-four cases cleared. It's a significant job and the detectives have been doing fantastic work. On the next page, you know, we've had years of gang-related problems. And this year is the first year, we've finished the year, sorry, Rick. We hope to finish it at zero, but this, this could be our first year with no gang-related homicide, so five more weeks.
The, the work last year did, did amazing work in the community. I get a lot of feedback that it's a lot safer out there, so people notice it.
Great to hear.
Juvenile stuff from two years ago, too, though. You have like two straight years of big moves.
Yeah, we did some big stuff.
Chief, have we identified the total number of gangs, different gangs?
Well, the Intelligence Unit keeps track of the gangs and the individuals who claim to be with different gangs. Really, two years ago, when we did that sweep and we, we targeted the Four Nation Gang, that was the largest and the most violent one. When they started going to court and the prosecutor was bringing up the fact to the judge that they are in a gang, which gave them sentencing enhancement. It really set the message through the, the city, these kids, that being in a gang is only going to, A, get you targeted by the police, and B, you're going to spend more time in jail. So I don't have a number right now, but I can say it's down quite a bit.
Yeah. Reason I ask is, I'm out there in the community and it seems like every other week I hear a new name come up. And it may be trying to start, you know, you may have a couple of kids that's trying to start a gang, you know, and they call it a gang. I just say they might start a little club and then just get into the wrong thing, but just, just, I'll keep you posted, though.
You know, most, most of the names aren't real fear-inducing names. They're plain Jane.
No comment.
Step down from a homicide would be a person that was shot. And in the past three years, it's, it was fantastic, twenty-six percent decrease and now a sixty-eight percent decrease. There have only been thirteen, in the first three quarters of the year, only thirteen people shot. Again, going from fifty-six, I think our worst year may have been around eighty-four people, which, again, there's only fifty-two weeks in a year, so eighty-four is a huge number.
Couple a week.
The next one here is those cases that do involve shootings. The, the amount that we're clearing now. The detectives, with the equipment, some of the newer technology that we've got, the crack cell phones and the license plate readers, the.
I'm sorry, is that crack, what was the cellphone thing you just said?
Crack, cracking into cell, the break in the cell phones.
Oh, like software to break in the cell phones?
Yes.
Okay. That's pretty high-tech.
We'll talk after we're off the mics. I'm curious which ones are more accessible and which ones are less accessible.
At the moment, I don't want you to go on the record, but are Apple more secure?
I'm going to make Chuck take his.
But because of all these technologies, we're, we're doing a better, deeper dive into the cases or solving them, or putting these shooters away in jail, they're being held accountable and therefore you hear that we're in a safer city because they're not out there causing problems.
Or if they do cause problems, other people see them getting in trouble and getting held accountable, so therefore it's not as enticing.
It, it works great. The juvenile unit, one of those units that we brought back, we used the ARC money here. I know that a lot of people were skeptical about using ARC for officers over time. We're going to talk a little bit more about how to retain them and stuff, but having the juvenile unit here, now we have a way to, to work with the District Attorney's Office, the Probation Department, even the school district has started a diversion program within the schools. It gives us the ability, if we arrest a kid who's a Erie School District student, that we can put him through the school district diversion program too. There was, you know, there was always that talk of the pipeline prison for the kids and it's, we're, we're blowing that out of the water here by offering the diversion programs that are out there, having the detectives, the juvenile detectives, the specialists work with these kids on that, that kind of stuff. So very proud of the work that the juvenile unit's doing. The other unit that the ARC money established was bringing back the crisis intervention. The mental health calls, whether they're voluntary, involuntary, domestic violence, family disagreements that they work out, adult welfare checks, children outreach with OCY. We've partnered with Crisis Services, the Office of Children and Youth, Mental Health, UPMC, Western Behavioral, Mill Creek Community and numerous homeless shelters. And now we even have, the county has opened up a facility for the drop-ins for the homeless. Not only do we have our car working twenty-four, seven, we have now two counselors that, through Safe Harbor, are assigned specifically to Erie. And I hope to have more early next year to show exactly what that, between the unit and those two counselors, how much more we are digging in to trying to resolve problems. Right now, you know, years ago, we'd go on a call, we'd put a Band-Aid on it. We just wanted it quiet for the night so the neighbors could sleep. And that was, that was a win for us. Now we're doing more. You know, we're trying to get to the root of the problems, trying to help them. And it's not just us, we're using these agencies that know how to do it better, but we know where to direct them to. These are the places, these are the people you need to talk to. And if we can focus our work on the people who need it, we're going to really help out.
So you have the, the two, and I mean, just for, just for, I mean, the American, verify this, the first time he and I ever had lunch together, I brought him a stack of examples of police precincts using social workers and mental health professionals. That was, that was my biggest fight in the midst of the ARP funding, is trying to put it towards that. And you got two of them last year. That's a very, that's a, that's a good way to soft-launch it. You know, how, is it going well enough that you want more resources to, to do this? And, and when we look at your police numbers, like you, I, I know, I looked ahead on the slides, we could talk about your numbers on that, but you get less support help, you have less staff supporting your police force than most other precincts.
Right.
That's an area that you are understaffed.
Right. And the, in this situation, I don't have enough numbers to give you, I don't have a good picture.
Yeah, you said early next year.
So I need, I need to look at it further. And it's not like we just have two. Crisis Service has always been in Erie, always has resources here, and people do take advantage of it. But we're able to, to fast-track people. You know, when you used to go to the emergency room, you went through Fast Track and they decided whether or not you need to get right to the doctor or you can go see a nurse right away. And that's what we're doing, is we're helping fast-track these people that have issues and problems, get them directly to these two counselors, who are making themselves available to go anywhere in the city, to meet with us, for us to take them, to, for us to bring somebody to them. The best part of this is that the doctors at Safe Harbor now are going to conferences across the state, telling them what we're doing here in Erie, and they are getting calls asking, what's your program? How, how are you, why is this working so well with your department? And again, it's a credit to the, the officers who volunteered to do this. You know, it wasn't, you're going to do this, it's, who would like to do this kind of work? If you put the people in the right jobs, match the skill set with the, the mission, you'll accomplish so much more. This is another great story. We're hearing it on a national level, that the overdose deaths are plateauing. Well, here, we've already seen a decrease this year. You know, we're at only twenty-six in the first three quarters, where last year we were at fifty-one. So that's almost a fifty percent decrease. So we're hoping that this trend is continuing. If we can finish the year off, you know, somewhere down there in the thirties, that brings us back to the twenty-twenty-one total. So the, you know, one of the grants that we have is the COSEP grant, and that's some of our drug detectives, they're going out following up after somebody has an overdose. And they're trying to reach them several days later to help them when their mind's clear, to get them more help, to get them into counseling. It's very tough, we, I wish we had some solid numbers, but the providers don't want to give us that information because of HIPAA, you know. So it's a little difficult to get those numbers, but I know the detectives have told me personally that they've had a couple of people that have actually taken them up on it and they've actually delivered them to counseling, so it's a.
Once again, that's, that's one of those areas where are the social workers able to go out on those calls? Like, that seems like a, a social work call as much as a detective call.
Honestly, I'm not sure. Rick, can you help me there? Are they using the, the mental health counselors or is that the drug and alcohol separate?
Yeah, it's separate. It's just, like I said, something, they do go undercover, they don't go in uniform, obviously, just because it keeps them at ease, but at the same point in time, these are drug overdoses against victims, so. We have an interview, said that was a part of the grant to have anything like that, but the grant actually runs out next year, the first, I think, quarter or just past first quarter next year, so it was, it would definitely be something we could look into. But the grant doesn't pay, it just, it pays for overtime for police. It was written, three years ago, we had an extension on it, it runs out next year, so it's something we plan on continuing to do, but we'll start with other avenues to fund that. And if, and if we are able to do something like that, we'd certainly walk that. We talked about it, but it just, this didn't fit the grant.
So when does this grant funding end, you said? In the first quarter?
Well, it was supposed to end this year. We had a little bit of extra money, so we got an extension, so it should end probably sometime, maybe the first or second quarter of next year.
If there was any spot that you have that you could put additional professional services to contract that out, not to police, but to continue that effort happening through like mental health, like, I mean, that's the kind of stuff that I'd be eager to see, especially if it's coming to an end and it's dealing with people overdosing and follow-up to make sure that they're safe. Like, that's the kind of stuff that I'm, that I'm really enthusiastic about.
To be, to be frank, there has been a little bit of pushback just because of the salient effect between different providers. We did have problems sometimes getting, you know, we had providers that wanted us to direct these individuals to them. We had others that said, you know, we'll, we'll be involved, but you have to send them to us. Our, our big thing was, we just wanted to give them.
Help.
Individual kind of help. So there is, there was a little bit of salient effect. We've gotten through most of that, we've worked through a lot of that, but that was one thing that we ran into. I do have some paperwork I can, I can send down to you as, as, like what we do, the services we offer, we give them handouts, we give them Narcan, reach out to families, so if the overdose victim doesn't really want help, we'll reach out to their family as well and deliver Narcan to them and talk to them and see if they can talk to them about it, so. We hand out a packet, we meet with them, give them Narcan, we try to offer them services. We had a decent amount of success to that. We have had actually people jump in the car with detectives and go to rehab. It hasn't happened a lot, it doesn't happen every time, but it has, it has happened.
I know how often it happens. It's, it's a rare thing and it happens from time to time.
It's a great, it's a great win when it happens, though.
Sometimes I bring a kid back from house to babysit while they're detoxing. Yeah, yeah, it happens. Different kind of work, but same.
This is our overtime over the last, this is back to twenty-fifteen. Generally, we're doing pretty good. Remember in twenty-twenty-three, we were over, I didn't think we were over that much, but I didn't have time to research that. But I do know that part of that was because we had cut the budget from one-point-four down to one-point-three, so that kind of was the impetus for last year requesting the larger amount. Plus, we knew we had an election year coming with all those visitors and the eclipse, so we kind of planned a little heavy on the overtime. This year, it's been cut back a little bit in there. The next page is the.
Chief, did we ever get any ARC money from the big-time politicians? We've, as far as I know, Lisa, you back there?
Yeah.
We've, we've totaled four, four visits?
Yeah, we built four and got nothing from any of them. We built Jake Vance in August, Tim Walston in September, Donald Trump in September, Kamala Harris in October.
And then there were six more visitors since then, but they've been busy, they haven't totaled up the, the paperwork yet, but I understand they will be doing that. This page here's the comparison for the police overtime and the difference shifts, how it breaks down, not real interested there. The next page there is our active grants. You know, this is, and you'll see they're broken down in the far right, whether they're equipment-based, their equipment and salary, and salary gen, can be salary or it could be overtime there. But actively, we have twelve-point-eight million dollars in active grants that we've been doing. Again, without the help of the Fifth Floor's grant-writing team, I don't know where it would be. You know, we wouldn't have, I know I wouldn't be here being able to give you such a good report, so. So, some of them will drop. Generally, they're one to three years, the grants, so any time over that. But this year alone, I'm sure Renee will correct me here if I'm wrong, but I believe just in the last month, we had six new grants come in. Is she naughty? Yeah, it was close to six-point-two million. So it, it's, it's not a one-and-done thing, it's, it's continual. And the next page there, Grant-Funded Positions in 2024. Obviously, we have eighteen ARC positions that created the juvenile unit, the crisis car, and gave us a couple extra officers on the NAP team. The Quebec unit is our Housing Authority. Those are the six officers that Housing Authority pays for. And the PAL officers, we've now gotten grants for. You've heard about the cold case detective. We've had an auto theft and an insurance fraud for a while. In our civilian analyst, we were able to find another grant after the original one ended and retained them on grant. Thirty-two positions are being paid through grants. Absolutely. That's a long, that's a long-term, great thing. Total Grants Received and Reimbursements. And these are different accounts that we're using to address drugs through the county, through the Attorney General. drugs through the county, through the Attorney General, uh, federal, uh, the District Attorney's Office. Uh, again, I mentioned the COSAP grant, which is the drug one. Um, US Marshals, uh, community-based crime reduction, uh, there's OSADEF case that we have going, um, our auto theft insurance, aggressive driving. May not realize that we have grants that usually the motorcycle unit goes out on overtime occasionally and they'll target an area where there's high accidents. You know, we do work with the, uh, County DUI Task Force occasionally, um, some other miscellaneous things that have come. But all told, um, one-point-two million dollars over and above our budgeted overtime. So I can tell you this, the officers are extremely busy. The driving simulator? It'll be here in a little bit. I can tell you I had a chance to, uh, try it out in Boston last month and, uh, it's a, it's a real, it gives you the real sense. After about five minutes of them putting me on ice and fog, I had to stop, you have to step out of it because it's, it's, you get motion sickness. It, it's, it's pretty good. We're, we're looking forward to getting that in. Um, the, you know, the police department, we were at a hundred-and-seventy-three for years. We've been at a hundred-and-ninety-four with the ARP. And the best thing now is we've gotten a little time with these officers. So those rookie officers we hired are now on the street answering calls and we've taken the experienced officers and put them into these specialty jobs. So, um, it is, it's working very well. On the retirement side here-
I'd like to take one step back on that.
Sure.
Uh, there was a pretty big reduction in lieutenants. Now, lieutenants, I don't, I don't, is that right?
Yeah, it's not right.
Okay.
There's, there's an error there. No, um, we're at twelve, twelve, uh, lieutenants. Uh, usually we'd have four, thirteen or fourteen.
Okay, so we don't have eight.
No. Yeah, I think there must have been something with the promotions in the detective unit, cause-
Yeah, the detectives were hired.
That jumped nine too. So there's, so some wires must have got crossed there. Um, retirements, you can see that, uh, in twenty-twenty, we were at nine. I don't think it was eighteen, I think this is, well, it's to be twelve. Cause I know there was a twelve on my sheet and it's not here. Um, twenty-twenty-two, we're ten, eleven, and twenty-three. So far this year, we have nine, um, that have put in their retirements.
That's low, right?
Pardon?
That's low, right?
No.
No?
Eight to ten is average for a year. And I already know that we're anticipating at least five next year that are already basically confirmed that they're planning on-
Letting you know.
They're giving me, you know, they're not giving me a week notice, they're giving me a-
A year.
This is my, you know, final ride, so. Um, and again, they pop up, um, whether it's medical issues, uh, just, you know, lightning bolt strikes and they say, hey, it's, I'm ready to do it. And new jobs come up, whatever. But, uh, you can see that we, we're consistently at least nine or ten a year now.
So for clarification, there's a hundred and, is there a hundred-and-ninety-four position?
Budgeted.
Just those numbers.
There's budgeted a hundred-and-ninety-four.
Okay.
Uh, this next page will actually get into that a little bit here. Hundred-and-ninety-four, we currently have, um, well, this is as of tomorrow. We'll have two retirements tomorrow. So it'll take us down to one-eighty-eight. Uh, we are planning on hiring four, so we'll be up to one-ninety-two in December. Benefit of hiring in December is that they will be here for a full year next year. So we get the full pension, uh, contribution from the state for them. That helps the city, uh, pay down on the pension plan. Of that hundred-and-eighty-eight on the staff, um, you know, we have several that are off, for injuries, uh, FMLA. Uh, we still have three that are gone since last year, December, on the military. You know, I guess two of them are back in country and I haven't heard from the third one yet, but, uh, they'll be coming back to work here next, uh, next month or in January at least. So looking forward to having them back in the country and, and back to working. Until they do, we're effective, are of effective manpower is a hundred-and-seventy-five officers. It's almost right where we were without the ARP officers. Currents, question?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, the current city population, approximately ninety-five thousand residents. Uh, the federal guideline is two-point-four officers for every thousand residents. With a hundred-and-seventy-five healthy officers working, um, and one-point-seven per thousand, um, we have the lowest ratio of all third-class cities in Pennsylvania. So we do a pretty darn good job with what we have.
Can I push that on this a little bit?
But you're gonna say ninety-three thousand.
No, no. Um, so the number that you're using for the two-point-four officers, that's also in the PFM report. That's the federal guidelines for uniformed officers. But that's not municipal officers, that's union, that's uniformed officers for a population. So that's not counting state troopers, county, like there's a lot broader picture of that. It also doesn't consider our high poverty rate, so we usually should have more comps than an area. But I looked at that when we, when we did the PFM report and the number's a little bit dicier than what you're offering here. And I'm curious about the, uh, comparison to the other third-class cities. Are you also using their healthy working officers or using their ordnanced or budgeted officers instead?
Their budgeted officers from the PFM reports still add us as the lowest.
Yep.
On our next page here, again, I've talked a lot, or said a lot about technology. Technology is, um, you know, has arrived here. Thirty-four years ago, it was, you know, carbon paper, electric typewriters. Yeah, electric if you're lucky, cause there were still a few manuals here. You know, the computers, you know, we had, we had six computers with green screen or, you know, DOS operated. And to have what we have now and some of the things that are on here, um, you know, we talk about ShotSpot or our photo kites or our drones, um, the Pharo scanner, uh, the AFIS, uh, work that does with the fingerprints, Celebrite and CellHawk, uh, those are critical pieces to investigating crimes. Really, uh, without getting into it all here, obviously, any time that council members would like to come and see any of this stuff and talk to some of the detectives and they can show you how this technology affects their investigations and how much it assists them, as well as if you just haven't visited the department, stopped down. Um, I put this in each year, reasons for police overtime. Usually there's ten, we, we added an eleventh, the VIP visitors. Our first, um, very important visitor, or I guess would be the moon because with the solar eclipse. But then we had all the presidential candidates. All the rest there, um, we put in each year to explain all the reasons why there's overtime. Uh, police overtime breakdown. I think we're missing categories on the right. So it doesn't quite give me all the numbers I wanted to talk to you about. But, uh, just to let you know that, uh, Lisa and her crew, you know, don't just pay out the money. They keep a pretty darn good records. They break it down by, uh, the shifts, the type of, uh, overtime it is. And then they take out any of the grants that affect it, what the change to the payroll is, and then the reimbursements and gets us to a grand total. Usually there's a percentage there. So it is that as well as comp time. Comp time is compensatory time. For most of the department, if they request comp time, they're asking for time off at another time. Other than the patrol off, the frontline patrol officers who have to have their shifts filled, that may create overtime for someone else. But for the detectives and the staff that don't have to be backfilled, comp time saves the mon- the city money because they take time off, but we're not putting someone in their place.
How do I get comp time?
Put in a slip, we'll see if Lisa approves that.
You're elected, you don't get comp time. Now, you should know this.
I try. All right, well, you know, we don't get to meet very often, um, so we do like to, uh, give you the full department update, so I get a break here for a second. Chris, it's all yours.
So this next, uh, slide here basically shows the up-to-date for two thousand and twenty-four. The citizen complaints have been filed. Uh, we have forty-eight complaints have been filed so far this year. Uh, they're broken down into different categories. Basically, sustained, incomplete, unfounded, referred, or exonerated. Most of them speak for themselves as far as what they mean. We are, I, I look at the five sustained. Typically, um, the police department, you know, we, we offer pretty, pretty much the service of customer service. We deal with everybody, um, we deal with complaints, um, that people have, so we respond to those. We just, uh, also have the power of arrest and to take people's freedom away from them, which are our two biggest, uh, types of complaints are use of force or some type of customer service related. Out of the five sustained complaints, none, none of those are use of force. They're usually typically, uh, minor type of complaints. However, we, uh, in reviewing them, I have determined that there has been some kind of deficiency, so we want to correct that deficiency and make sure our officers are out there doing the right thing. Um, so, you know, they've, there's been some type of resolution to them. This year, we did have five use-of-force complaints. Out of those five use-of-force complaints, all five have been exonerated, meaning that, uh, we found that there was no policy or procedure or law violation. I should note that all five of those exonerated complaints, or all five of those, uh, you know, the complaints that were exonerated were done so by video. So I've never done this job without video. I can tell you that if I did, it would probably take me a very long time because, you know, people file a complaint, they more than likely have some type of injury. So I have to, you know, get medical records, review reports. Um, I'm able to make a determination a little bit quicker cause I'm there, um, you know, watching videos so I could, I get to see it as it actually unfolds and to see if there was a policy, procedure, or law violation. So having that video is crucial. It saves us a ton of man-hours by having to do lengthy investigations. But more importantly, it saves us money in the long run, um, so that if lawsuits come, and they do, um, we're not paying out nearly as much because we have that video and we're able to say, this is what truly happened opposed to, you know, five years ago. We didn't have that video or we relied on cell phone video or surveillance video. Now we're providing our own video cause all of our officers, every single officer has a body camera signed to them. Use-of-force complaints are up a little bit more this year than last year. Um, but again, the two last year were exonerated. One, uh, was a false complaint. Uh, the other one was from, I believe it was like two thousand and eighteen, it was a really old complaint. And then twenty-twenty-two, again, we had two exonerated complaints, again, by body cam and video. So, um, overall, you know, we've had no use-of-force complaints. Some minor, uh, deficiencies that we have noted and have taken corrective action.
Is there a definition for use of force?
So there's a, there's a use of force, it, it's defined as there's a use-of-force continual. So it starts with simple mere presence. So us being on scene is a use of force because our mere presence being there and it goes all the way up to, um, you know, a death. So that, that's basically where it goes. We're typically using the use of force that's necessary to overcome the, the resistance that we have. You know, so we, each, each incident, you know, is, you have to break down individually. You can't just say something whole, I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, uh, placing your hands on somebody and placing them under arrest is enough. Sometimes we have to use, uh, ROC spray or a taser, um, or sometimes a firearm. So I mean, every, every incident is different, but it ranges mere for, or, uh, use of force starts with just us being there. You know, because if we show up, we tell you to do something, you have to do it. So that is our force, it starts there all the way to deadly force.
Thank you.
I mean, people gave us a hard time about body cams.
Mm-hmm.
I can tell you this, this is, and this is one thing I never thought I'd hear because we started a body cam program, we were about fifty percent. You know, newer guys were technology, they're like, it's great, you know. Some of the older guys, they didn't, they weren't used to it and so forth. We had a bunch of officers transition from the patrol division to the detective division and they all asked, can we keep our body cam? Cause we were just having for patrol at the time. Luckily, we got another grant that was able to equip everybody with them. So all of our officers wear them. And I mean, everybody loves them. Our detectives are wearing them out, they're able to use them for other things than just the encounter. They're going out and doing interviews, they're documenting crime scenes. So it's, overall, it's, it's a great program for every officer to have.
You know, when we talked about it initially, uh, storage was a big concern.
Yes.
We have enough storage?
We have, yes, so we, um-
The cloud.
We're in the cloud.
Oh, yeah.
We're in the cloud. With Axon, we did sign, um, for an unlimited third-party storage. So not only, right now, Axon holds all of our Axon-created storage. Body cameras, car cameras, citizen evidence, that type of stuff Axon holds for us right now at no charge. But we have a lot of other video. People, the cell phones, we talked about the cell phone hacks or, um, digital forensic extractions. You know, they're about sixty gig. Think of all the information, all the pictures, all the data that you have on your phone. When you buy a new phone, you gotta transfer all that. So now we have to copy that and keep it here. You know, and it's usually fifty to sixty gigabytes per phone, um, a good homicide. You know, we're three, four, five, six phones. Some people have two or three phones. So we have to store all that. Our servers are slowly filling up again, we just got a grant, so to expand them, however, that's filling up. So with Axon, with this new contract we signed, we have unlimited third-party storage. So now we can dump in the cloud and it just remains there forever.
Just, uh, within the last few months, our data storage in the cloud, we broke one-hundred ter- terabytes-
Oh, wow.
-of information. And that'll just continue growing. If we had that in an in-house server, I think our computer department would have taken over to the third floor of City Hall by now. Uh, going on to our next page, uh, the Police Athletic League. And if you don't know what this is or anything about it, you're living under a rock. It started in twenty-sixteen with thirty-five kids. Right now, one-thousand-seven-hundred kids are now registered. We have finally gotten into every school building in the city of Erie. The last couple of elevens that we weren't in, we finally got into, um, four summer camps, local field trips, they've gone to Washington, New York City, Pittsburgh. This winter, they'll be looking at a trip to Gettysburg. So, uh, grants, Erie Insurance is, came through with a huge grant, a hundred thousand, so that they could do these kind of trips. And, uh, the Robert Irvine Foundation, again, second year in a row, has come through with twenty thousand. Um, so that's been, uh, you know, these kids are now in the high school. And we had a board meeting the other day, Tom had a problem. Too many high school kids for one location. They don't have a large enough gym. problem. Too many high school kids for one location. They don't have a large enough gym or place for all the high school kids that are showing up. It's a great problem to have. You know, we talked about, one of the things that we might, you know, we had on our long-term plan was if we get the money together for Miller Brothers to actually make that our PAL program headquarters there. Put a gym in there. There's plenty of room. We could have the offices. And the best thing we've seen is Twenty-First and State is the center of the city of Erie. So
And it's on the bus route.
Whatever corner of the city you live in, Twenty-First and State is the easiest for everybody to get to. If, if we can get, if we, I'm sure Renee will find us money one of these days, for another grant, we, it's, it's going to be fantastic.
Other places that you need that?
Well, the school districts have their buildings, but when you get to the high schools, it's tough because we're, we've got the collegiate, we've got Erie High, we've got Prep. I think we have Mercy Earths now, too. But to find a place that all of them can come in at one location is, we've got, we'll, we'll figure it out. You're right. Yeah.
Keep you going.
You know, I, I know that they just applied for some funding and they're looking at the first phase of Miller Brothers, and that's to get the fire department on the French Street side set. We know that the Moore Street Garage is a huge problem that has to be dealt with. And we're hoping to be not far behind them in getting some of our stuff there. Even more so because, the photographs. Not sure how much of this I've spoken to council about. They're on the screen. If you can see the screens, you know, there's the front counter of the police department and our, our paneling there is getting a little dirty, worn, scratched. You know, City Hall is what, sixty-five years old? Not that that's old. It's not old.
All right. You clear that up pretty good.
But it might need a little refreshing. It might need a little refreshing. And you know, to go inside behind the glass, behind that sixty-five-year-old bulletproof piece of glass, which probably take out and test when we do the remodel and see if it actually stops a bullet or not.
I mean, you waited sixty years to find out.
Thank goodness.
I'd be fearful to know the end result.
Well, we've seen it unfortunately happening at, you know, large and small departments across the country. Hopefully, we'll never be one of those. But, you know, you can see, you know, there's a clerk working, you know, he's got a space heater on the ground behind him. He's got all kinds of cables, uneven floor. It, it's, it's a mess. Next page there, you know, these are ceiling tiles that, you know, for thirty years, smoking was acceptable in this building. What's not acceptable is touching those ceiling tiles because above them is asbestos. So all the cables, you'll see a couple, you think it's just a line, but those are cables because we can't put them in the ceiling because we can't move the ceiling tiles. You know, we've got, you'll see there's water marks, there's, there's an old camera housing there, vents that are broken and dangling there. The next page there just shows the wires from the ceiling down into the floor. We can't even put the lid on the floor because there's so many lines going through there. That's why the offices, you'll see the walls there don't go all the way to the ceiling. So get the wires through them. You know, there's between six and eight employees that are in this central operations area twenty-four, seven. Those rooms are never empty because that's the heart of the department. And after sixty-five years, we've been working with Public Works, Jason upstairs, and Dave Brennan's group has done some preliminary work, looking at how to reduce the amount of wires, take out the asbestos, put in new ceiling tiles, put in efficient lighting system, reconnect the HVAC system the way it's supposed to be, not the way it's been jury-rigged. He's been doing a ton of work and we're going to be twisting Lisa's arm for capital money to get the project past the finish line. This is something I've been asking the mayor since I became chief is, can we get a refresh here? This, this room really needs it. And paint's just not enough. One of the funny things, Jay, Jason asked Dave to get us the most up-to-date numbers of how much you think this project's going to cost. And he goes, Dave, you know, we're going to go to city council. They're going to ask, what could we cut out of this? How are we going to make this cheaper? And he, and he looked and he goes, Jason, this, this isn't a Cadillac. This is a, you're simply rebuilding a Chevy here. We're not getting a single inch of extra space. All we're doing is fixing a room that, you know, our employees have to sit in twenty-four, seven, you know.
Has the asbestos issue been taken care of?
It's been tested. We're, the air is clear as long as we don't touch the ceiling tiles, we're told.
Oh, my lord.
That's not acceptable. That really is not acceptable.
That, that's why we've been, we've been pushing for this. And I think we're, we're close.
As long as you cover it, it's okay. Holy crap.
One of the, the biggest, hardest things now is that when they go to do this work, we have to be totally out of there.
Yes, you do.
And with the construction and stuff, it could be anywhere from four to six months.
I was gonna say, where are your six to eight employees who work there all day?
Where are we going to put them? And that's the plan that we're, we're working hard on squeezing some space out of the building to move people into. And again, it's, it's not just to move an office. It's, it's the nine-one-one phone calls that, the emergency calls come in and have to be answered and they have to have access. The one room is our NCIC room, and it has a, it has a dedicated line for the criminal justice stuff we do. You know, it's, it's like an old teletype. You know, nobody else is allowed on this line. It's dedicated to that system. So wherever we move that office, we have to move that wire.
How immediate are your plans? Because I mean, some of this stuff sounds like you're working out plans. How much of it's immediate? How much of this involves the Miller Brothers building? I mean, this is, this is stuff that is, is this a 2025 issue or is this something that you're giving us a heads-up on so you can talk to us about it next year?
This is, this is, uh... We're, we're hoping that early next year, to have the, put out bids. I hate to have money identified to do the work and then to put out the bids and stuff. I'd, I'd love it to be, you know, February or March so that we're not too far into the summer. Miller Brothers will fit in here. We have a large amount of stuff in a room in the basement, and we can convert that room into a temporary classroom for our roll halls. In order to move it out, we have to create a secure space up at Miller Brothers. And we've got a plan. It's, it's taking a little, it's slowly, it's coming together. But that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight, that, you know, so you're not hearing about it for the first time at the beginning of the year. But it's coming along great. Again, it's, it's just going to get us enough outlets so that the space heater doesn't trip the breaker, you know, that the lighting is controlled because sometimes it's nice, you know, to control that.
You're gonna gut the room and rebuild the room. You're gonna gut the room and rebuild the room.
It'll be gutted down to the studs, but it'll, it'll be, it's going to actually be re, they're like, well, do you want to move offices? And we, we talked about that a little bit. And it's like, you know what? The space is what we have.
Right.
It's operational the way we have it. Let's save money, not move things that we don't need to. So everything will go back exactly where it is. It'll just be refreshed. And again, anytime you want to stop over, I can give you the five-minute tour. I could give you the three-hour tour. Chuck's already had the, the three-hour tour. But I'll give you the five-minute tour if you want.
Another three-hour tour, and I love spending time with you.
I think we should, aren't as loud as we can with PAL being a five oh three C one. Read the paper. Everybody dies. There's a little flower sent in to catch society or whatever. PAL would be a real nice place for a lot of folks that are ex-teachers, you know, ex-police hire, people like that.
There was
A lot of people realize that they can do that.
We had a civilian employee whose father just died, and that was his, his wish. And it was in the paper to donate to PAL. So it's a great program. And I'm hoping next year, I'm going to say, it's not growing anymore. We've gotten to max capacity and, but hopefully we'll say we'll have great places.
I went over and talked to the kids a little bit there. I didn't spend a whole lot of time talking, but I spoke a little bit and talked about B-side and things like that. And when I'm done, I'll be thinking I was talking to, maybe Higgins, I don't remember. But this little meat chubby little guy walks up, taps me like that, he goes, nice job. He walked away. I don't know if that's his name. That's where his kids are all over.
Yeah, it's, it's great being around. It makes, it makes you feel great. Again, these are things that, you know, twelve years ago, we didn't have, you know, ten years ago, there was no PAL. A lot of these programs that we've done, we didn't have years and years ago. So the department is not, it's not your mother or father's department anymore. You know, the, the kids that we've been, for everyone we, for every nine or ten people that retire, we bring on nine or two new people. And the young kids we're bringing on, you know, we've got three, three millennials that we've hired. You know, these are young kids. And, you know, they bring that mindset to the job, too. So I'm, I'm super proud of them.
These guys can talk to us all?
Guys, anything to follow up on that?
All right, yeah. You guys did great. Thank you for the presentation.
Very good presentation.
Was easy the follow-along? We got all the good juicy details?
Thirteen point six million dollar grants.
Okay, so we've got to update that page.
Yes, yeah, we just found that out.
It was probably just in the last twelve hours. I'm sorry, what? Lisa?
Honestly, they hit, they hit the high spots. They cut three hundred thousand from the overtime budget. That was one of their slides. The rest of it, we went through.
Yeah, well, I mean, there was some, we moved fifty thousand out of one account and put it into another. There's, I think we asked for like eighteen thousand dollars more.
Yeah, and then six hundred and sixty-six thousand for, for
Axon, which
But we just talked about that.
Up until now, we've been using grants and, and grants and capital. So that, it's gonna, and I think we're, you know, unless Renee plans on retiring tomorrow, we'll keep getting more grants and we'll pay for more of that stuff.
Yeah, I think that concludes our
No, I have a question. Sorry. I forgot. Does your overtime and work with Celebrate Erie, is that paid through Cafe?
I think there was, well, a portion. None of our, our officers, no. Our officers are through the city.
Okay, when they're on Celebrate Erie?
Yes.
And there's overtime in Celebrate Erie?
Yes. They, Cafe pays for the Mill Creek officers and the sheriff's deputies. The state police come in on, on request. So they're, they're covered through the state. But we've been using Mill Creek and sheriffs. And the private security company of Valentis provides about twenty, twenty-one security through the festival. And I believe that is all out of Cafe.
All right. I think that concludes our third study session of the season. The next one will be on December third. It's the Solicitors and the Treasurer Office and HR and Civil Service and Risk. So thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.